Call please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson. Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, we're happy to have Father Brandon Williams. He's the Assistant Pastor at St. Thomas More Church. Welcome. And he'll be doing our invocation tonight. And Commissioner Abraham, if you'd do the pledge of allegiance tonight, please.
I will.
Father Brandon, you want to come on out?
As we begin our meeting this evening, we place ourselves in the presence of God, and we call on the grace and the guidance and the power of the Holy Spirit to lead us into tonight's meeting and to open our hearts and our minds to God's holy will. Let us pray. We stand before you, Holy Spirit, aware that we gather in your holy name. Come to us, remain with us, and enlighten our hearts. Give us light and strength to know your will, to make it our own, and to live it in our lives. Guide us by your wisdom, support us by your power, for you are God, sharing the glory of Father and Son. You desire justice for all. We ask that you enable us to uphold the rights of others. Do not allow us to be misled by ignorance or corrupted by fear or favor. Unite us to yourself in the bond of love, and keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather this evening in your name, may we temper justice with love, so that all our decisions may be pleasing to you and that the goodness of all of our citizens in which we lead be upheld to your greater glory. You live and reign with the Father and the Son, Jesus Christ, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any additions or deletions tonight, City Manager?
There are none.
We'll go on to appointments. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Carol Vanderboe, Dapne Hall, Diane Bedwell, and Alberta Davis as members of the Civic Beautification Board. These terms will expire July 1st, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the actions of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Carol Vanderboe and Dapne Hall, Diane Bedwell, and Alberta Davis as members of the Civic Beautification Board.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Whereas I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Leslie Page, Craig Newbern, Matthew Schultz as members of the Paducah Human Rights Commission. These terms will expire July 24th, 2017.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendations of Mayor Kayler in appointing Leslie Page, Craig Newbern, and Matthew Schultz as members of the Paducah Human Rights Commission.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Once again, I want to thank these folks for serving on our boards. They do it and take their own time and receive no pay for this, so we appreciate that. On to municipal orders, Commissioner Wilson.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Hi Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have a variety of actions for your approval. I would just like to draw your attention to three actions retirements in the Police Department. We have Detective and Training Officer Rob Estes with nearly 20 years of service. He's retiring along with two captains, Sean Maxey with nearly 20 years and Mark Roberts with nearly 22 years of service. So, we hope them the best in their retirement.
I saw Maxey in here today and told him, you know, we would really miss him, and he's just such a wonderful guy. All these officers that are retiring are wonderful people. They've served us well and been a great part of the community, and we'll really miss them. And I'd like, I mean, would they come to a commission meeting so we could say thank you?
Yeah, I understand from Chief Barnhill that they are planning something on August 1st, but more information will follow on that.
Okay.
As a reception.
That'd be great.
How are you coming with replacing them?
We had testing just this weekend, so we had...
Just two seconds, I'll get on that. July 12th, this past Saturday was our applicant testing. They do the physical fitness test in the morning. If they pass that test, then they move into the written test in the afternoon. We had roughly 76, don't know how many, that number, but I think that was the number that showed up, out of 105 or so that actually applied. That is probably the largest pool that we've had in a long, long time, and from the very onset has been the most diverse group we've had for a very long time. So, we've got our fingers crossed, we're going to make sure that we get several good applicants out of this. So, expecting good things. It'll take probably a couple of months for us to get there, though.
Now, would these positions be filled with promotions? Or how do you fill?
That is part of the process that we've had. On July 3rd, we had an internal process in which I notified the Department of who would be replacing. Those promotions are coming up. They're set to be on, I think, next Tuesday night's commission meeting to bring them in front of you for agreement and proposal for them to be promoted. And then we'll do some jockeying around a little bit. Obviously, you all are aware of Captain White over at E-911 right now. So, we're moving around. We've got several people wearing several different hats, and they've all agreed to do that. They know in the end run, and about six months from now, we'll be much better for that, so.
Well, and I saw a news story about that you were suspending one program because of shortage on staffing. So, which program was that?
That's the Traffic Enforcement Unit. That is a three-person unit that's just allotted to specific traffic enforcement. That is a suspension that is temporary. I don't know how long that temporary suspension will be. Could be six months, it could be a little bit longer. And that is all depending on staffing. We've seen the fruits of their work in the last year and a half and the double-digit reductions in the areas that they've been focusing on. So, we'll bring that back, but all that does is the public's not going to see any change in that. They're going to see that transfer of responsibility to different officers. So, you're not going to see specific enforcement just by those officers. You'll see more encouragement to work some of these grants that we'll bring up here in just a little bit. So, the public's not really going to see much of a difference at all. Just an internal adjustment for us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Cindy. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Execution of Termination of Contract, Lease, and Option By and Between" City of Paducah, Kentucky, County of McCracken, Kentucky, and Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority dated June 1st, 2004, and amended June 27th, 2006, be adopted.
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We'll go on to ordinances adoption. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Reimbursement Agreement with Paducah Water for the Water Construction Related to the Olivet Church Road Way Improvement Project," and authorizes the Finance Director to transfer funds from the General Fund Reserve Unappropriated and Designated Account. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement between Paducah Water and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for reimbursement for the actual labor and materials necessary for water construction to complete the Olivet Church Road Way Improvement Project at an estimated cost of $460,000. In the event the total invoice amount exceeds the amount required to complete said project, the city hereby authorizes the Finance Director to issue payment for the actual cost to Paducah Water. Additionally, the Finance Director is authorized to transfer funds in an amount not to exceed $127,000 from the General Fund Reserve Unappropriated and Undesignated Account to the Olivet Church Road Project Account.
Second.
Hi Rick. Hi. Mayor Commission, this project was well underway. Paducah Power has completed their work, the power relocations and their fiber. JSA is probably about 50 to 60 percent complete on their work. Paducah Water is moving in to get started on their work, and I just want to take an opportunity to thank them for their diligence and also working very, very hard with us to get these projects as tight as we could get them financially so that we could, you know, keep moving with it. So, I just would want to thank them publicly for that.
Thank you. Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Ordinance introduction, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah Accepting a 2014-2015 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award for DUI Enforcement by the Paducah Police Department, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Grant Agreement and All Documents Relating There Too with the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $8,271 through the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet for a 2014-2015 Law Enforcement Service Fee Grant Award to be used by the Paducah Police Department for DUI enforcement, and hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto.
Second.
Chief.
Mayor Commissioners, I bring in front of you our annual application for this grant award. Last year it was about 8,700, this year it's a little over 8,200. Out of this 8,700, that goes towards about our 60,000 roughly total in state grants that we get. These grants are very vital, leading back to your question earlier about our traffic enforcement. These grants, this one specific to DUI enforcement, is part of that puzzle in how we, you know, work on our issues within the community as far as traffic enforcement or DUI enforcement or distracted driving. So, this is our annual grant submission, and we're asking for approval.
While you're here, Chief Barnhill.
Yes.
I had talked to you earlier about some concerns from some folks in different neighborhoods and what I call opportunistic issues with thefts. So, would you talk a little bit about how people can better protect themselves against some of these things that are occurring?
Yes ma'am, I'd be glad to. Specific to, I think, what you're talking about, just to make sure that everybody is aware of. In the last three to four weeks, we've had several, a large handful of vehicle theft, thefts from vehicles. We've also had probably three or four vehicle thefts. We think all of these are tied together. Matter of fact, as I came in this morning, I was met by one of our midnight shift supervisors that held over just to speak to me specifically about this issue. We've made great strides over the last few days. We don't have arrest warrants in hand, but I suspect, got our fingers crossed that those will be coming within the next few days. And a larger, bigger concern for year-to-date, we are still down 19 percent in our thefts in our large area. So, that's, you know, it paints a little bit of a picture. Although the last three or four weeks have been very busy for us, you know, what we're asking the community to do is just be a little more vigilant. I can promise you that our guys are working very diligently on our end. We've handed out several different assignments over the last few weeks. I won't go in depth what those are, but what I would ask for the community is cooperation and help with that. You know, if you, don't ever assume that what you're leaving in your car has no value, because it may have value to someone else. It may not be of you, to you, but it may be to someone else. And that opportunistic individual that's coming by there may take advantage of that, either break the window, and/or the large portion of these thefts from vehicles are left unlocked. There have been a couple of occasions in which the vehicles that were stolen had the keys in them. And obviously, that's making it a little bit too easy for criminals that are in town or that are taking advantage of some of those opportunities. I do have a couple of notes here that I would like the public to pay attention to. It just says, "If you must leave something valuable in your car, put it in the trunk before you park. Do not leave backpacks, shopping bags, computer bags, or anything that might contain a valuable item in plain sight. Never leave the cars or the keys in the ignition of the car. Obviously, do not leave it running. We give that as a tidbit, that's also illegal, so please do not do that. Always roll up your windows and lock your car, even if it's parked in front of your home." A lot of people assume, and we live in a great community where it is very safe. So, we get a little bit complacent, and we think that if I'm parked in my driveway or parked out in front of my house, it's okay. Well, a large percentage of the time, it is. But as we've seen in the last three or four weeks, there's been a few little individuals running around town that are taking advantage of that. So, we have several other tips. You can Google any of those tips that are out there. We have some on our website that are going up, I think, maybe even our Facebook page. So, we welcome anybody to call us. They are not a burden to us. If they see something that they want us to come out, and it may be nothing, but sometimes they're not going to know, and we're not going to know unless we stop that individual and ask a few questions. So, please call us if they see suspicious activity.
And Neighborhood Watches programs are good.
Yes, we have several in different areas of town. If your neighborhood that you live in does not have an active Neighborhood Watch, please contact us. We'd be glad to assign an individual to communicate with you and to set up that.
While you're up here.
Yes, sir.
In the Rollin Town neighborhood area, there is Betsy Ross Park.
Yes, sir.
Right there, a couple of those folks that live in that neighborhood, next to, really close to the park, talked about how there's activity there. They mentioned the fact that most all of our parks close 10 o'clock. The way that park is situated, there's, you know, it's just open, it's right there.
Yeah.
Particularly this past 4th of July, there was a lot of activity out there, drug activity. These folks that live in that neighborhood was wondering about how the Police Department navigated through the city. And I talked to them about, and you can talk to them about how the city is broken up into zones or however you all do that, but they were really concerned. These folks have lived there a long time, and a lot of young people congregate there well into the AM. And was asking, "Is there anything that I could do to remedy that?" And I said, "Well, I'll talk to the chief."
Sure.
So, just making you aware of that, that's a concern that they have, and it's been going on. So, I told them that I would talk to you about it, and...
I appreciate that. I appreciate you bringing that forward to me, and I appreciate them bringing that to you to make sure that it gets to me. As recent as a week or two ago, I have spoke with Director Thompson. He's got some measures as far as the park side of it, maybe lighting, maybe fencing. That's all, you know, a little further down the road. Some timing signs to put out there when the park is open, when they're allowed to be in the park and when they're not to. Those are some of the things that on his end, now on the enforcement end of, from what we can do, we'd be glad to look into it. We'd be glad to send our officers by there just to check on the individuals. As I mentioned, we have a safe community, and a large group of those individuals are not the problem makers. But there's those small contingencies that we have to deal with, so we'd be glad to go by and check on them and continue to make sure that that doesn't happen in that neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief, do we still have a curfew?
We do. We do.
Under what age?
For juveniles, it's under the age of 18. 18, they become an adult. On weekends, it goes up till 10 o'clock, I'm sorry, on the weeknights, it goes up till 10 o'clock, and on weekends, I think it extends to 11:00. We, matter of fact, we use that curfew ordinance quite often. We used it two nights ago.
Okay. So, we have some things in place to deal with the...
We do. It's just a matter of having the resources at the correct time to be able to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had great ribbon cutting today for Teletac, and it was very well attended. And during Todd's talk, he said that not only were they happy to be here in Paducah, but they're going to increase the employment to 550. So, that was really good news, so that's an extra 150 people that will find employment there. And he told a great story that a friend of ours, Cindy Ragland, told. She's been working with a lady for 18 months, trying to find a job for her. And the lady got a job at Teletac. She has three children, she's a single mother with three children, and Cindy was so excited, she got teary-eyed, that this lady has gotten a job with Teletac, and she'll be able to provide for her family now. They have wonderful insurance benefits, full coverage, so it's a good place to work. They still need more people to work out there. So, anyone listening to this, tell your people that need a job to contact them. I think they have some job fairs coming up, Sandra.
I believe Thursday and Friday, they'll be at the Community College in the Merging Tech Building.
It's good to have them in Paducah. Any comments in commission?
Yeah, I have a couple. One, I took a tour of VMB today, and...
Had a great...
I lived here since 1972 and never really, always drive past it. But actually, Bob Peterson was kind enough to extend a tour to myself and a young man today. Absolutely amazing what they do over there under that roof. They're working over, they're doing, working on over a million hours of no accidents. And it's a very dangerous place to work. So, that lets me know that the employees bought into that safety. Just, they're sending trains to Australia, just all over the world. And they're made, right, Paducah built. You're a train guy, you know? I mean, it was awesome. It was awesome. So, you know, they do tours, you know? Just call them, let them know. If you had a group wanting to come by, just let them know. And it was really great. I was in awe, and I realized so many of those guys in there I know, I knew working. I didn't know where they worked, I see them all the time. And so, it was really, it was almost breathtaking to see them lift a 22,000-pound piece of train and flip it and take care of the underneath side of it. You're sitting there watching, and everybody's so in sync, hand signals, everybody's on point. So, it was a great afternoon. Took about an hour, so it was great.
They talk about how many people they employ, because they have a...
Well, they just run, right now, they're doing, just running the day shift now, but I think he said about 200.
Yeah, I thought that was around 200 employees.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Now, the other thing I wanted to talk about was regarding the article in the paper today that related to the murals. And specifically, the last paragraph in the article that was in the Paducah Sun that talked about the only folks that were, that would work on those murals were from the Dafford team. I went back and I looked at the meeting that we had on June 25th of 2013, because we were, you remember, the chamber was packed, and at the end of that meeting, we decided that, okay, so as long as the original artist is doing his own restoration, none of the artists that were here objected to that. They're like, "Fine, that's okay, we can agree with that." But apparently, that's not the case. So, that last paragraph, Mayor, that the Sun quoted you, where did that authority come from to decide that if Mr. Dafford has a group of folks that he can select, if he can't make it, then they can work on his original work? I'm not, I don't think I got anything from our attorney that said that that's the way it was. So, I'm wondering, where did that come from?
The way I understood it, and that's why I made that statement, is that they would, they would get bids from Dafford-trained artists to do the restoration. From Dafford-trained artists.
They being?
Herbro, I mean, Robert Dafford.
Dafford would get bids from folks that he had trained?
Right.
To come to Paducah to restore his work?
Right. Dafford-trained artists.
That's not their original work, though. That's his work. Now, I'm assuming he had a chance for first refusal.
Do you want to bring this up again and us change things?
Well, I just think when we have an opportunity to hire local artists, we should do that. I mean, we talk about Paducah proud and local, you know, go local, and we have an opportunity, when we have an opportunity to do that, I think we should take that lead. Now, if there's something I'm not understanding, I wish someone would give me some clarity on it, because originally, the work that Mr. Dafford did on the floodwalls in Paducah was...
And Herbro did some of them.
Right, well, but let's go back to the beginning. It was a situation where a citizen of Paducah saw the work being done by Mr. Dafford and hired him to come to Paducah and do the same on our floodwall. That is defined as a work for hire. That's not covered in anything I could find, and I'm no attorney. I'm just, like Commissioner Rhodes, sometime I get on it, I get on the computer, and I pull it up and see it. So, the very law that he says that's entitled him to make these decisions, he's not even covered under that. Now, when our city attorney was here back last year, he talked about the law as it regards your right as an original artist to do work on your own work. That's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But when we have an opportunity, if Mr. Dafford decides, "I'm not coming to Paducah to restore my work," then we have an opportunity right there to keep it local. And, I mean, you guys jump in here. If I'm way off base, someone, because I'm not really supposed to be here, amitaming. So, I mean, it seems to me we had an opportunity, we had a window there to... We talk about our artists, and they're great, they're wonderful, talented. We get articles written up around the globe about how wonderful our artists until it comes to the murals there. So, I think it's important to make sure that we understand exactly what the law says about original artists delegating that out.
Mark, can I have a question, Mayor, may I?
Mm-hmm, sure.
And it's from Mark Thompson, actually. And I don't, I'm not sure about this, but to the best of my...
I don't have it right in my, okay, I don't have anything in front of me.
Well, and to the best of my recollection, did we get an opinion from Denton's office last year in regards to this?
I believe we did, and I believe it was based on copyright. And the artist can choose who can work on their art, is basically what it is, whether it's them or their trained muralist.
Was it copyright, or was it the...
It's the, there's the law, and I can't think or remember the name.
Vera.
VIBA.
An acronym there that... There's an acronym.
Vera Law. Vera.
The Vera, and yeah, I think that's what it was. And I'd be pulling it off the top of my head right now, and I have not reviewed it.
I can give you an example, I think. If...
I couldn't verify.
If I hire you to come to my coffeehouse and make me a statue or paint something, and I pay you the money, and you build this statue at my coffeehouse.
Okay.
And if a year from today, I say, "You know, Mark, I've decided to paint that thing Fire Engine Red." I can. Now, as I understand Vera, if I go to the Mark Thompson Gallery, and you have built a statue, and I say, "Mark, I want to buy that statue from you, and I want to put it in my coffeehouse," and I do, and a year later, I say, "Mark, I really want to paint that thing Fire Engine Red." Then you say, "Whoa, Alan."
No, you can't.
Under, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Because that's my art, and I created it, and you bought it from me in my gallery. That's the way I understand Vera.
Well, and this is...
I'm not sure of the intricacies of that.
And exactly, that's exactly right. We're making decisions, and there's loose ends all over the place. I mean, there's no attorneys in the room here.
Why wouldn't we get a legal opinion on it? And I think that the Dafford name itself is a nationally-recognized name and property of his that has some restrictions to it.
And I do recall, looking at some of the background, that some places had replaced it or covered it and done some things, and there were some suits and that.
Well, just... Well, just.
I don't know what the result.
Well, let's, let's, let's not go down the road here. Let, here's, here's, here's the thing, here's my concern. We never, we never pinpointed exactly what that law said. We were in a spot last year where we had a local artist submit a bid to work on restoration, an artist that had worked with Mr. Dafford, and all hell broke loose. No, can't do it. I don't want this person doing. So we're like, okay, as long as you agree to come back to Paducah and do your own work, that's fine. And everybody said yes. Now, it's changed. Now, either, either we, I mean, we have an attorney on, on retainer. And to get a clear understanding exactly what an artist has, what they can do and what they can't do, that shouldn't be that much of a stretch. I just want to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity to have our local artists, who we celebrate greatly, to have an opportunity to do some work here locally. Now, if the law says no, you can't do it, fine. But right now, all I'm hearing is, I'm not sure, off the top of my head, I, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement on this, that I think everybody's correct that the legal issue wasn't necessarily resolved to the point of everybody's understanding what we could or couldn't do. My distinct recollection of the way this matter ended or resolved itself is that I believe the commission expressed an interest in a Dafford muralist continuing to maintain those murals. Secondly, that if it were possible to get competitive pricing for that service, then that's what we ought to do. So that's the basis upon which we proceeded. Now, if it's different than that, then we need to discuss it and establish that. But that's my recollection from last year.
Well, I, the first part of that, I'm not so sure. I'm, I'm, I know that when I went back and I looked at the meetings, a couple of meetings, I know that it was, it was my understanding. I even made the statement at the end of that meeting, as long as the original artist is coming to do the work on his own.
I remember, we talked about that, that oversight aspect of it, Commissioner Abraham, that under his guidance or tutelage, I'm not sure just exactly what all that was.
Well, that conversation happened, but I don't think that conversation applied to what the, the law says that.
I agree with that because I think it was at that point that, again, I don't want to speak for you individually, that this is my recollection. I may be off on that.
No, that's.
And I don't want to say anything derogatory about local artists or their capabilities. But I think we established the uniqueness of this art form. And I think we arrived at some qualitative, qualitative point here that recognized the uniqueness of this and the importance of maintaining the integrity of that mural by having that same capability do the maintenance as what did the original murals.
That, that's, I understand that, I understand that. And you bring up the integrity of the, of the piece. All of our artists here in, in Paducah, the ones that I've met are great artists. We need to make sure that we understand exactly what that law says so that we can put to bed exactly who needs, who is allowed to work on the art, on the flood wall, and who isn't.
You mean, as far as what the commission has the authority?
Well, I mean, yeah. Now, now, here, here's, here's the other part of that. If it's, if it's first refusal, you have first refusal on your artwork. Well, I can't come down and do that. So I'm going to appoint someone else. Well, you, you can't really do that. Well, then it comes to us. We can, we can appoint some, we can do whatever the process says. We put it out to bid. If that's an opportunity for us to do that, for our local guys to bid on it, then I think we should take the lead and do that. But I'm not sure exactly what the law says. So until we know what that is, we need to make, we need to find out what it is.
Yeah. Well, I think there's two aspects of it. And there's that, and if the commission wishes, we can, we can take the time and, and figure that out. The other aspect of that is, is that what you want to do?
Absolute, I do. Do I need to make a motion? Since, I mean.
No, 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 I meant, I meant, do we want to put it out to bids for other than Dafford trained muralists? And I mention that because, again, that was my sense, the way this issue closed last year, is that going forward, that was what we wanted to do. And I think that's why the commission expressed an interest in, in trying to get some competitive pricing amongst Dafford trained muralists. And that's my.
And what I remember as part of that conversation was that we were going to look at having a conversation with Mr. Dafford about getting Dafford trained muralists in the community because of the art school, because we have this longstanding wall that will continue to need maintenance, and that we needed to figure out a solution to look beyond just this next two or three years and figure out a way to have artists within our community trained to be, right.
I remember that.
I, I remember that portion of the conversation in addition to that. So where are we kind of, and maybe that.
Well, first of all, we need to find out exactly who can work on the art and who can't.
Yeah.
And then move forward from there.
We can do it that way.
I mean, I mean, that's.
Step number one.
I mean, before we start thinking about building arts, getting art students, we need to find out who's allowed to work on original work.
The reason I say that is to say, what makes me think, part of that conversation leads me to believe that there may have been something that led us to think that it had to be a Dafford trained muralist. Does that make sense to you? Do you understand what I'm saying?
That was my, that was my impression, that it had to be a Dafford trained muralist.
That's the, and I'm not saying.
Not just, not just Robert, but it had to be between him and a Dafford trained muralist.
Well, let's.
I think that's part of protecting the integrity of that artist.
Well, let's, yeah.
And that is a national, nationally recognized artist program for flood wall murals and that type of work. And even though our artists are very talented, everybody has their own specialty of what they excel. And this is a nationally recognized program for Robert Dafford, then that name itself brings people here to see it. So I just think it's important that we protect the integrity of that program.
And as well, I think it's important for us to make sure that we understand exactly what laws govern those original artists when it comes to someone else working on, I don't know what the law says. And I don't think anybody up here knows. So we got, have counsel.
Yeah, we own the thing, so it's a matter of what our rights and responsibilities are. So we can put it that way to the attorneys and get the question answered.
Make sure that we understand that if I'm the original artist, do I have the right to, to, to assign that work, that upkeep to someone else? So let's, let's keep it simple. It's not complicated, the question. And I think once we get that answer, then we can move wherever we need to move.
Do we own the art? We own the flood wall?
But see, that's the other piece of the question that I didn't think about until just when we were having, when she just said that. It's the copyright issue.
Yeah, that's right.
He, he just said that there was an opinion on copyright, and then what we were just talking about was Vera. So.
I'm not sure that we're.
I don't know about the, I mean, that's confusing to me.
We actually have the legal right, even though we own the flood, flood walls are ours, I don't know that we have the legal right to have a non-Dafford artist working on his work.
Well, that's what we need to find out.
Well, we have a, we have a room, we have a building for the lawyers across the street. These guys, and we pay them a lot of money to make.
That's your point tonight. You want us to get a legal opinion. That's what you fly.
Yeah, before we start, you know, saying, go ahead, paint it up. We need to make sure what we're doing.
That makes sense.
Yes, they're already here this year.
At the end, to go exactly the same way. But it's nice to know what the rule is. And we may say, look, we're perfectly happy. Maybe somebody else can work on it, but we may decide that we want Dafford to roll to do it, even though somebody else could do it. But just to know what, what we're.
Just so everybody's aware, that they are here, and Herbro is working on at least one panel that he was the original artist for.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
It's his work. It's his baby.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. City manager should report.
I have tonight Steve Doolittle and Rick Murphy that are going to give you a brief update on the, the status of the Riverfront project following the review that was conducted by PRDA. And Rick, as long as you're up here, we take just a minute. The flood, the Nova Park Bank Stabilization Project commenced here in the last week or 10 days. You give just a little bit of a.
Why didn't you hit me?
Mayor, Commissioner, and I think probably in the last 10 days, and we start on July the 7th, on our project where we actually put snow fence up to kind of quarter off the area so we couldn't have some young people that might wander into the construction zone. And we're well underway with that project. We've lowered the lake elevation, so it helps the contractor complete the work. And while lowering the lake, we actually discovered some assets that have been underwater since 1994, which made us kind of scratch our head a minute and a little bit about Duck Island. If you go out there, you'll see a big round area that's got a concrete shore protection there on it. But in 94, we agreed, well, it was decided to raise the lake elevation, I think for support more fish or aquatic life to do that. So we're, we're investigating yet another thing for Duck Island. City manager, myself, are looking into some solutions for that. But we're staying steady with the course right now. But it's just something that has thrown a kink in the works somewhat because you see things that you didn't know until you lower the water surface elevation, and then it makes you scratch your head for a second. We're moving right along with that project. We've removed some fence. We've trimmed some trees and just hope everything goes smoothly. We managed to keep the young people still playing and we're working, so.
You mentioned bike path, too, as long as we're, we've got several projects underway, so let's.
Well, actually, when I came in from Louisville today, I stopped by five of them. I was counting from all of it, from Teletec all the way into here when I got here. The bike path, the underpass, actually, I stopped at that around 5 o'clock today. They work through the weekend, getting the road cut and getting the pipe in. We ought to be seeing some foundation work on that going in. It's, it's moving around rapidly. We've got signs up now on the boat launch project. I want to bring this up as well. City manager, we don't want to be, I guess, killjoys in certain areas, but when you build a facility for a purpose, you want it to be used for those purposes and not other things. We've had to put up no parking signs on the entryway because we had people parking on the entryway going to the boat launch, because when the water was up, they would want to park and go fish off of the road bank. We've had a lot of people fishing off of the boat dock. We've had a lot of people parking their cars on the boat launch and fishing and stuff. So there's a lot of new interest down there, but it's the interest that's not for launching boats. So we've had to, I guess, curtail that and say, if you want to fish, we're more than welcome to fish. Just respect the boaters that wish to use the facilities that were built for them. And so we'll be working with PD now that we have it posted to, I guess, kindly encourage them not to fish in places there. I actually also was down there and I saw one of the 18-wheelers come in, one of our CDL Truck Driving School. We have six acres of asphalt and of parking facilities. So I had to kindly ask them, this is not a training facility for the, the truck driving schools. We're trying to gingerly let people know, we want this to be used for recreation and boating and, and fishing. So, but everybody's coming up with alternate uses.
The lights are up now?
The lights are, no, the lights are not put up. All of the poles are installed. Paducah Power has installed all the poles and has run, run the wires. The lights will be put up. I think by the end of this week, they just came in yesterday.
What about signage?
Signage? The signage that's.
Have you had it on Park Avenue yet? I may have missed it. We were, I thought we were going to put some more signage to direct people to it.
To the boat launch?
Because that was one of the things that last fishing tournament was here, they said that we really lacked in signage.
For boat launch, for like boat launch, turn right. Okay.
Turn left, turn right.
We can, we can work on that because a lot of, when you go up to the lake, you see the brown signs.
Right.
Boat launch symbol on it. We can work on that. But no, no, ma'am, we haven't got those.
Can we use brown in the city like that?
I'll check on it. Typically, for recreational purposes, it's, it's a brown, it's, it's brown with whatever the symbol is cut out for it.
And are we having trouble with people leaving trash there?
Unfortunately, we are. I've had conversations. Steve Doolittle and myself were down there just to visit the site, see how things were going. A lot of people managed to bring their refreshments with them. And I characterize the term refreshments with them. They bring them in a cooler, but, and we have a dumpster up at the top of the hill. And in my discussing that matter with some people, I said, you know, this is sad. We spend this kind of money and this happens to it. It's kind of like goes back to the Indian, back when we were kids and the litter and the tear and stuff. And I asked him, I said, you know, he said, well, there's not a trash can close enough. I'm like, it didn't come in a trash can. You brought it in a cooler. You can put the empty in the cooler and carry it out with you. Just so, I mean, that's typically the way we go to the lake. I mean, it's, you know, but it is unsightly. There's portions of it that are unsightly, and it's something we'll have to deal with.
Lights will probably help.
Lights, oh, and I will add this, we will have three cameras.
Okay, there will be security cameras.
There will be a camera, there will be a camera that is on the boat launch itself for safety. It will be well lit. The, the purpose for the cameras, if somebody needs help, maybe we'll see that. If somebody's not behaving in a way that we need for them to behave, we'll see that as well. And we'll be able to get license plates and whatnot from three different directions, going, coming, and part of the park, so.
And is the underpass back to it, is it on target to be completed on time?
We're on schedule. We're on schedule. We had, when we started the cut on the 27th, that would put us at the 28th. We're supposed to have traffic. Now, will we be totally done? No.
The road will be back open.
But we should be barring no bad weather. We should have it back under traffic on the 28th. Barring no bad weather.
Hey, Steve.
Well, we haven't had PowerPoint slides yet, so Rick and I would like to use these to, to talk. Just, just a few, help us, placeholders for reminders. This is where we started shortly after, after demolition. You can see the ghost image of the executive inn burned into, permanently into the landscape. And the, right there, yeah, the dome and the, and the convention center facilities off to the, to the left. And there's where we are today. And I got that off of Google Earth because they fly theirs a little bit more often. You can see the, the change. You see more concrete from the executive inn because it ended up as part of the fill material for the, for the, for the Schultz Park Project Phase 1A. Engineering and bidding.
Is that the form of engineering and bidding?
Going forward, next week.
Okay. You recall that PRDA recommendations came back that we, I guess, scale our project back from the, the sense of finishes, where we don't have such lavish finishes, with some alternates. And then also the discussion of moving portions or reducing portions of the project, i.e. taking out the ship store and some of those recommendations that came in. In order to put this in a bid package, the, we could not take the project in the form that it was. So we needed to make revisions to the plan to create a bid package, to put it out on the street for receiving bids. I received a proposal today from BFW to accomplish that work that would take, would revise the plans to create the bid packet and get you a bidder. I will be bringing that proposal to you all next week, or your next meeting for introduction.
Moving, moving on. This is a, an initial draft of the hotel site plan. Since that one was already drawn and, and in the can, it's already been edited several times. But because the, the footprint of the hotel has been changing as, as a design has been evolving and, and as the parking lot, parking lot layout has, has changed as well. But, but it shows the, the magnitude of the area that's impacted on the, on the former executive inn, property with the convention center being right to the left, where the, the structural improvements for the, for the hotel will be right here on, at 600 North Forest where the, where the pavilion dome is now. North Forest, where the, where the pavilion dome is now. And then I, I stuck this in because this is going to impact us. This is a, a drawing by planning that shows the entire length of the, uh, Greenway Trail, both the existing sections, um, that are already built, and then this last little section, Phase 4, which picks up from the Earthenberm and will go back to Schultz, uh, Park. We have put that to, um, um, the, the granting agency, the state government, and they've said, yeah, we, we can do that. We originally were going to, as we talked about, tacking it on to the, the end here, but, but, um, seemed to make more sense, since we were built here, since the hotel project was going on here, and Schultz Park was going on right here, that we would finish this last little leg, um, going this way. So we, we have, uh, the hotel element going on, we have that element going on, and so we have this with the hotel here and, and the Greenway Trail coming through somewhere here, the park improvements going in here with the transient dock, we have this, we have this scar, um, in the middle. So during, during the budget session, um, you appropriated some dollars, uh, for, for PRDA to go out and do some, some master planning. Um, uh, next week at the, at the PRDA meeting, we, we solicited, um, or PRDA last month approved a scoping document of what it is that we're looking at and, and what are we, we trying to get done. We're not going to go over this, uh, tonight, uh, but this is what, uh, what PRDA went through.
Thank you.
It's a, it's an interest, it's a, it's a problem because of the, the poor condition the area, um, is in, with, um, with the city investing some ultimately $10 to $12 million in this spot, a $19 million, um, hotel, a, a new parking facility going in, and, and our belief and desire that we want to move the people attracted to the hotel and convention center back downtown for, for dinner and for shopping and for other cultural opportunities. Um, how are we going to do that? How are we going to get, uh, people, uh, to do that? We can't hardly leave it in the, in the poor condition that the property is now. And the, the park improvements that, that we're doing at Schultz Park, they have this real hard edge. I mean, that's the design limit, and it's just boom, it's, it's, it's just cut off. And then we have the, the Greenway Trail, um, coming in somewhere, um, in, in this area right here. So we have to finish up and put all those, those, uh, pieces, uh, together. We did, um, um, speak with, um, Ratio, they're a landscaping, urban planning group from, um, from Illinois and Indiana. They've done work in, in Kentucky, they work extensively with Bacon Farmer Workmen of, of Paducah, and they are giving us a proposal on, on master planning at six acres. Uh, PRDA will hear more about that, uh, next week. We've had, um, in addition to, we've had two former plans for this site. Um, the JGR Master Plan spoke to, it had a vision for, for this area, um, um, the Renaissance Area Master Plan had a, had a vision for this area, but they were, they were just highly generalized plans. We're trying to take it to the point of, give us something that we can, um, that, that we can, uh, implement, uh, something that is sustainable, something that, that, that ties the, the convention center, uh, into the downtown and, and blend it all into the park. So, so it's going to be a, an interesting year from PRDA. We, we expect very much the same sort of process to go through to, to PRDA to conduct an intensive study in that, and then, and then come back to you, it's your property, uh, to come back to you and say, here, here's the plan, here's what, here's what we're recommending you do.
Steve, part of that area butts the flood wall, clearly, and other, it all does.
It all does.
Yeah, our limit of it does.
The, the black line is the flood wall.
Okay. Do you think that the master planning process, um, would have as a goal or could have as an outcome, um, redevelopment of that area in such a manner that it would incite private investment on the other side of the flood wall?
Well, that's why, if you see the, I've been talking about the, the.
Or reinvest, I'll just say reinvestment.
We have as focus area, but really the plan area is, is a little bit, air bigger. If you look at the, the, the purple line, um, um, you just can't look at the little spot, it's really going to have a, a broader impact, and, and certainly the decisions that are made on the focused area will, will influence private development, um, in and around that.
Is that, is that a visual thing as much as anything? I mean, I think the word scar is pretty accurate for what's there now. But to turn that into an aesthetic positive, is that, is that something that's going to contribute to reinvestment?
Absolutely, a, I would, a, a deal breaker for private development. Nobody, nobody's going to want to look at that. Nobody's going to want to invest in anything to take advantage of the views of the Oha River and look at busted up concrete on the ground. So something's got to change.
And then what, what have you all talked about with the old Schultz Park?
Well.
And not the new addition?
Well, a significant amount of the old Schultz Park is rehabilitated in these next phases, and we've, we've, in, in the PRDA plan, we recommended to you, some of that gets, gets deferred for, for a gradual implementation, but, but eventually, and, and I don't know, that's going to be subject to, to you and the city manager and, and annual appropriations for, for addressing, how do we complete it from Jefferson to where the federal dollars are being spent?
Now, I'll remind you, that's this area, as soon as you come to the flood wall at Jefferson and, and Water Street, uh, there, it's this initial, uh, approach, that's the deferred cost that would be set aside in future budget cycles, maybe, uh, I would estimate at least two budget cycles to complete, oh, come on, where'd you go, Miles? To complete this area here, and where this tie is coming into the, uh, existing Schultz Park, it's where the elevations are compatible for that tie to be made.
That will be reflected in the aforementioned bid documents, um, that.
Okay.
That will be coming forward next week.
Well, that PRDA board seemed like for years just kind of laid dormant, and we got a new set of eyes on the, uh, the Riverfront development. You guys went to work, came back with a recommendation that everybody felt great about, and now with this, um, anything we can do down there to encourage private development in that plan area, uh, will be great. And, uh, I look, you know, I look forward to seeing that happen. So it's encouraging, report.
I'm, I'm glad you said that, Commissioner, because really what, what's been going on so far with Riverfront and, and this plan coming forward, it's not just PRDA, it's, it's, uh, it's city planning, it's engineering, it's public works, and it's, it's the Parks Department, we've all played a, played a role in, in putting that together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have public comments tonight? Gary, we, we try to keep it to about five minutes, if possible.
More than I'm going to need.
Okay.
First of all, I appreciate the, uh, update by Rick and Steve. Our family's been real impressed with the, our Vanderbilt family's been real impressed with the limestone that you all were able to ship in from my grandfather's quarry, our property. And it's definitely impressive, uh, we've been down there several times, so I don't know, Rick, a million tons or so, uh, three, big, big bunch, big bunch came in on barges, so we got more if you need it, so just let us know. Uh, but no, I'm here tonight for, uh, uh, for an invitation, to grant an invitation to all of you on the board, mayor, especially the mayor, and all the commissioners here. Uh, there's a National Advisory Board that's coming into town on Thursday, and it's been advertised through Cold War patriots and, and some of the, uh, uh, nuclear worker advocate groups across the nation. This board is, has already held their meetings in Rocky Flats. We were in Rocky Flats when the board was established. We met with the Rocky Flats workers, my company did, and, and DOL was in town for that presentation. Uh, this is a very important board for the community, because I think all of you are aware of the nuclear workers and their contribution to the community, and their sacrifices, and the stories are horrible. Uh, but what's happening on Thursday, uh, I want to, I think Mark is here, uh, I want to commend Mark. I, I was asked to go over and kind of check out the building and tell everybody where the tables are going. We're the only local company that actually is involved in the sick worker program. So Commonwealth Environmental Services went over, and I was really impressed by the, by how Mark has got the building, uh, really fixed up. I, I couldn't believe it. It's, it's super job, by the way, Mark. So, uh, the National Advisory Board is, uh, is coming to town, there will be DOL officials, uh, and Richard, you might want to come in and meet Malcolm Nelson, he's been receiving several of the, uh, complaints from the claimants across the nation, just not in Paducah. And so Malcolm will be here with his associate, he was in Portsmouth, we gave a presentation in Portsmouth, and, uh, several of the dignitaries were there. We had a senator from, uh, Sherrod Brown's, uh, staff was there, uh, one of the staff members. We had a congressman there, I apologize to her, she was really a great lady, really wanted to get involved. So we would encourage all of you to come to this, this is going to be an open mic that DIAB, one of the members of DIAB, this is a national group, it's made up of a, of a volunteer group of people across the nation that are trying to help the nuclear workers correct their, correct all of these problems that are going on, and they're fully documented to DOE, to DOL, and to anybody, uh, that would listen, basically. Senator McConnell's been briefed on it, Congressman Whitfield, Rand Paul, uh, they've all been invited. Mayor, you probably saw my invitation to you, we have a, uh, we invited McCracken County Judge Executive, uh, Van Newberry. And I volunteered to kind of help get all this together, because they're not from around here, and so I would encourage all of you to take the opportunity and come and meet the workers who have something to say to, uh, this National DIAB Board. Now let me, uh, let me run through the, the, the DIAB is the acronym, it's, it's the Division, I would have probably changed it, but Division Energy Employee Occupational Illness Program Act, that's the D, I is Interim Advisory Board. Now what this board is, uh, is doing is they're taking this back, all of these complaints of what people have had happen to them, and there's probably five to, five to 10,000 at a minimum, because you're, you're all are aware that 19,000 claims were filed in just West Kentucky alone, correct? And with that, only approximately 2,500 were paid, and we've been fortunate enough to overturn 2.5 million in the last year, our company. But we do need help from everybody to understand the extent of the program, program, uh, of the problem, and, uh, and, uh, so it's, it's just important for all of you to show up and show interest, because they, they want your help, the citizens of Paducah are going to be there, the community, but it's for PGDP, Paducah Gases Diffusion Plant Employees, USAC employees included, and, excuse me, Allied Chemical, uh, Honeywell. And so Senator Durbin's staff is working to help change the problem over there, they're not entitled to party, but they worked as our coworkers. So we now discovered drums of DOE material being processed from Fernal that were stored in Paducah, by the way, uh, at the Modine Plant, all of you are aware of that? You are now. And so that warehouse was recently torn down, uh, and Steve might remember some of that. I don't, I don't really remember, I do remember Modine. So those drums were apparently stored according to the workers over here in Paducah, transferred over, maybe covered in cover of darkness, but those workers are going to be coming to Paducah too. So please, at least take a little time and come in and listen to what they got to say. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's Thursday, what's today?
Where's it going to be, Gary?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's this Thursday, short notice, I know, I'm sorry. This would have been a big help. Uh, it's this Thursday at the Cherry Center, they've, uh, they've leased the facility from you all, and, uh, it will start at 1 o'clock to 3, and then go to 7, where they'll break up and have everybody, and it'll all be videotaped for everybody to see and the involvement, and it's going to be taken back to, uh, members of Congress where they can actually, and Malcolm being there is very impressive, because he's got, he's had the problem submitted to him, and he's going back to talk to the president about it, from what I understand.
1 to 3?
It's 1 o'clock, it starts at 1 till 3, uh, and that'll, there will be some introductions, so Mayor, I'm sure if you show up, we'll introduce you too, or even Allen. Uh, but it, there's, there's supposed to be a 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock. Donna Hand will be chairing the meeting, and she will explain DIAB and what the, what's going on, and where, they've come from Portsmouth, and now we're in Paducah, and we want, we encourage Malcolm to come to Paducah, and he did. So, Richard, uh, Carol, all of you are welcome, okay?
Thank you.
You too. All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, we do have an executive session tonight. It has that.
I do. I'm into the board going to close session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcels of real estate is permitted by KRS61.8101B. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity is permitted by KRS61.8101G.
Second.
Okay, city clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye, and we will not be coming back to take any action tonight.